To order, this is a regular scheduled meeting. Today's date is Monday, November the tenth, twenty twenty-five, and we thank you for your attendance. And we say to these young folks, you get to watch your city government in action this afternoon. What we do is all real. You're part of the fun part about why we do this, but it's not always as fun and enjoyable as it will be tonight. But we will try to do our best. I've been dragging my feet because we have a city commissioner missing. And usually when one of us is not going to be present, we let someone on the commission or someone in City Hall know about what's going on. But so, but we'll go right along and see what happens, okay? On our agenda tonight, we have an opportunity where we ask the participants online and those in attendance with us to bow and a moment of silence. And tomorrow's, tomorrow's Veterans Day, so I'd like to ask for us to have a moment of silence in recognition of all of those who have served and all of those who are serving right now and for all those who will serve this country in the future. So if you would, a moment of silence. Thank you all. Are there any veterans present? Any veterans present? Sir, would you come forward? I'd like to ask you to lead us into place, but you just took flag. There are only two veterans here tonight, this is you and I, but we can do it together, right? Usually it's a packed house, okay? All right. Prepare your leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented from the commission. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Whoa, thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments here and then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved as presented. So next, we will have a hear the public. At this hear the public opportunity, citizens can be recognized, come to the podium, can speak to us tonight, but at this time in our agenda, you may only speak to us about things that are on our printed agenda. So if there's anyone present who desires to speak to us about a topic on the agenda, you may do so at this time. Later on, though, there's an opportunity where we'll hear from the public about items that are not on our agenda. And we say hear the public because we attempt to listen and not respond. Not respond, okay? So anyone? See, none, then we'll move right along then. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Chair would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of ten twenty-seven special call and regular meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions? Here and then, the chair will call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, our minutes are approved. Fun part of the meeting, we have a proclamation next in recognition and honor of the Boyle County High School Ladies Soccer Team. It says girls, oh my people, but I'm gonna say ladies, right? Because y'all grown up. At least y'all think you're grown up anyway, right? So recognition for the Boyle County High School Ladies Soccer Team. Commissioner Peak?
Whereas the Boyle County High School Rebel Girls Soccer Team had an outstanding year representing Boyle County High School and the community. And whereas the Boyle County Rebels finished their season winning the Kentucky two A state championship for the second year in a row. And whereas the Boyle County Rebels were also twelfth region champs for the third year in a row, forty-fifth district champions for the fifth year in a row, Constitution Cup champions for the fifth year in a row, and recorded the program's four-hundredth victory in school history since starting in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas the Boyle County Rebels finished their season ranked number one in the state RPI in state team scoring and in state team scoring margin. And whereas the Boyle County Rebels had four players named all-state and nine players named all-twelfth region team. Whereas the Boyle County, Boyle County High School Girls Soccer Team members and coaches are shining examples of focus and dedication to be the very best that they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things, they are to be commended. Now therefore, it be resolved that Mayor James J. H. Atkins and the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, on this tenth day of November, twenty twenty-five, do hereby congratulate the Boyle County Rebel Girls Soccer Team on becoming the Kentucky State Two A Champions and encourage all citizens of Danville, Boyle County to congratulate them on their success and representation of Danville and Boyle County.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move, we accept this into the record?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Probably move the second, and all in favor of accepting this proclamation, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion encouraged, congratulations. Now, is the, oh. We'll get to that later on. Is the, is the team captain present? Is the team captain present? Oh, you didn't know that, right? Come on up to the microphone. And is, and. Oh, wait, 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 okay, hold on, come on. And it's the coach you present too, right? She'll probably be more able to, more able to speak to me since she's standing beside her, right? But before we do that, Commissioner Peak wants to add two other awards, it just.
Yeah, I think that there were two other awards that were received last week, which was twenty twenty-five Coach of the Year, Coach Dean. And then, I think the twenty twenty-five Soccer Player of the Year.
Miss Soccer, yes.
Miss Soccer.
Kentucky State Player of the Year.
Kentucky State Player of the Year, so she, she's not here tonight.
She's in basketball.
So we want to say congratulations to her.
All right, all right. Congratulations to her too, yeah. Would you like to say something, young lady? Identify yourself, first of all. Name, name, rank and serial numbers, military time.
Brayley Lefew.
And your rank is, you're sophomore?
Oh, senior.
And your serial number?
Twenty-three.
What is it?
Twenty-three.
She got them all right, how about that? She figured it out, right? Okay, tell us something about your team and yourself. I like messing with high school kids.
Our team has really good chemish.
I can pull it up.
Pull it up.
I'm gonna say. I don't want to say.
Um, our team, I'm really proud of them and the team chemish rebuild this year, our accomplishments. Um, oh, he's talking to me on the side.
Well, he's trying.
And I love them like a family, and we've done a lot of good things this year. And I just can't wait to see them play next year, too.
Coach, you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you all for having us in here, first off. This has been a special year for us. I'm blessed beyond belief with the amazing talent and kids that I have in here. I think that the thing that we do, try to do is represent our school and our community at the, at the highest standard possible. And I think the young ladies that are here and that played for us this year definitely do that. So it's definitely a process every year. Awards are great, but it's, it's a group effort. It takes the coaches, the parents, the administration and the players all to come in together and, and make these accomplishments happen. So I'm grateful and just happy to be here to represent Boyle County and the girls soccer program.
Well, again, congratulations.
I'm over here, I'm over here, I'm over here.
I kept saying, wanted y'all to wait on it for the end.
Yeah.
You all come down, take a picture with us. And I heard that the superintendent was present tonight, you might want to say it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, congratulations. These are the motel-sized keys to the city. We want you all to raise your hand. And we want, I hope you should have given enough keys to the, to the team.
Look at him.
I see you next year, that's right.
Take your picture.
Everybody smile.
All right, now I get one. Everybody smile, one, two, three, smile.
Thank you.
All right, right here, smile, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All you ladies leave the record before you all leave the room. Have a seat right quick, I'll let you go to keep this. I, I said this was the good part of the meeting. And you know, you got your goodies, but we want you to stay and be present for someone else being recognized tonight as well. We have in our presence Ms. Jane Dewey, who was, was recognized at our last meeting as a citizen who was gone the extra mile for all of Danville and Boyle County. And she was out still trying to go that extra mile, doing some more work with artsy types of things. But she's present tonight, so we'd like to ask Ms. Dewey to, to come forward. And she spent, let's see, fourteen years as the Arts Director of the Scapa School in Lexington, thirty-nine years as the Director of Arts in Danville City Schools. She was one of the artistic directors of the Danville Heritage Festivals for about another fifteen years. And so she's got a real nice repertoire of being recognized statewide for her accomplishments as an artist herself, but also in dealing with young people as artists in the field as well. So Ms. Dewey, if you come forward, we'd like to recognize you as a citizen of Danville and Boyle County who has gone the extra mile for our community. And I forgot to tell you, I see kids that, hello, Pete? Know when you hear the phone, they'll be like, they'll beat you out of gym one time. Are y'all friends with them, they'll beat you to the whole weekend. You gotta figure out which one. All right.
Everybody smile, one, two, three.
Is the, is the lady nervous, is this looking at him? He's like, standing before you, he's still, he went out and broke his foot, he's even. Dismiss my class. All right, Boyle County Soccer Players. I'd like to dismiss my eighth grade social studies class. And I've already given out the homework assignment for grandpa, right? You won't forget. All right, you all have a great day. Thank you all, congratulations again. Now, I'm, I'm not her grandfather, but her grandfather and I took Lamar's classes together.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. Hey, the, the, the granddaughter said, ask him about Lamar's classes. What's Lamar's classes? Some of you all remember, but I failed that class, so don't be. Oh, it was nice to recognize some young folks, okay?
Yes, very nice.
Next on our agenda is that we're gonna have a Bluegrass Community Action Senior Program update. And Ryan Torres, Mr. Ryan Torres, you want to come up and present some good information to us? Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Atkins and the commission for allowing me to share about these programs. Congratulations to the girls soccer team for winning state. And they got the keys, hopefully they don't ever have to use one of those. But that was very nice of Mayor Atkins. So my name is Ryan Torres, I'm with Bluegrass Community Action Partnership. We have tons of programs, a couple of them you all are probably familiar with is our buses around town. We also do our lie heap services, which assist families with their heating bill or cooling bill. But I wanted to come here just to highlight a couple programs that may not get the spotlight. And they are for our aging population here in Boyle County. Both of these programs, they are for individuals over fifty-five years old. They're both funded through the AmeriCorps grant. Neither, none of y'all look old enough to be in the program just yet, but. But yeah, they're both funded by the AmeriCorps, they're both for participants over fifty-five. One of them's called the Foster Grandparent Program, which is just in its second year here in Boyle County. Really in central Kentucky area, just its second year. But it's been in different areas in Kentucky for about thirty years. The Senior Companion Program, we've had that program here for about thirty years in this area. So I'll, I'll try to round this up and make it pretty quick, because I could probably talk for about an hour or so about these programs, because I love them so much. But the Senior Companion Program, it's, it's a program that has two sides to it. We have our Senior Companion, and then we also have our clients who receive the services from the companion. For the clients, it is a completely free program. There's no charge or anything to have, to get you a companion. And as far as the companion side of the program, we provide those companion volunteers, the senior volunteers, with a stipend. It's four dollars an hour, doesn't sound like a whole bunch, but we have, most of our participants may be making around a thousand dollars a month. So if they're receiving a stipend for four dollars an hour that's not taxed, doesn't affect their benefits, it's about three or four hundred extra dollars a month for them, which makes a big deal for the volunteer. So both the volunteer and the client, they're both over fifty-five years old. So the great thing about this program is that the person providing the services is actually a peer. It's not somebody that's younger or anything like coming in their house and telling them what to do. A lot of times, our companions become friends with the clients just because they are peers. A lot of times, they know the same people here in town and stuff, and they get to talking and doing things. But the, the goal of that program is to basically allow the person receiving those services to remain in their home and age in place, meaning it's designed to help them age in their own home instead of going to a nursing home or anything like that. So a lot of times, our, our companions provide respite services for family members or caregivers. They can go in the household and help with small tasks and basically little things to help them remain independent. So it could be wiping down the counter, could be sweeping the floor for them, it could be just throwing a meal in the microwave. But most times, and a lot of times, the, the services that they're providing is really just companionship. A lot of the clients that receive these services, they, you know, some of the only people that might be seeing them is probably their family members. And some of them don't even have family members coming to see them. So their companion is actually someone who comes and visits them. And, you know, I love my family a lot, but I will say, if that was the only person that I was seeing, I would love to see a new face come in, a companion appear, come in and, and visit me. So they go in, they could play games with them, they could play cards, bingo, or they could watch some movies together, or they could just sit there and clean the house together, or whatever they want to do. They're, they're companion, and they're just there to help them remain independent in their homes. Our service areas, we, we serve ten counties, it's the BGAD district. We do serve Boyle County, Anderson County, Fayette, Franklin, Garrett, Jesmond, Lincoln, Mercer, Scott and Woodford. I could go into a bunch of the, the different things about the program, but I'll just keep it short, and if y'all have any questions at the end, I'll be glad to answer those. The other program that I wanted to highlight was our Foster Grandparent Program. Like I said, it's another program that's funded by AmeriCorps. So it's the same thing, we still have our senior volunteer, has to be fifty-five and older. Our program designates someone fifty-five a senior. So a lot of people don't like that part, but that's part of the eligibility. You gotta be over fifty-five, so you're in the club once you hit fifty-five. But basically, what we do with the Foster Grandparent Program, we place those senior volunteers in our Head Start program here in Boyle County, so they go into the classroom, and they're actually, they're assigned a kid who may need a little extra help socially or emotionally, just a little extra attention. And they provide that extra care and guidance and mentorship to the kids in our classroom. Here in Boyle County, we do have our daycare, which has kids ages one to two, and we also have a Head Start ages three through five. So we'll, we'll place them in a room. Most seniors, they like to be with the, the younger, the babies. They like to rock them to sleep and different things like that. But there's also something special about the senior volunteer going into these classrooms with ages three to five, because a lot of times, these kids, I don't know if, you know, you're around many kids ages three to five, but that's a, it's a pretty wild age, right? But a lot of times, they approach our senior volunteers with a little more tender, as if they are a grandparent. They would approach me and come up and probably hit me or something, you know? But with our grandparents and our senior volunteers, they're a lot more tender, they're a lot more receptive to any kind of guidance that they might provide them. There's programs, like I said, it's brand new here in Boyle County for just the second year, but I've seen it in action in southern Kentucky where, I mean, it was just a beautiful program to see in motion, and we're hoping to get it going. In southern Kentucky, they actually have it through, up through, I think, ninth grade. So, they place people in middle schools and different things like that. Our goal in the future, once we get going, is to expand and hopefully get something like that. I think that's all I have to share with you guys today. Did y'all have any questions for me on those programs?
As far as the companion program, are the numbers going up as the...
So, they actually are going up.
I figured they would with the aging population that would play into that.
Yeah, so I'm the outreach coordinator with Bluegrass Community Action. My job is to get participation in these programs and retain that participation. Currently, I know we do have 36 volunteers that are serving around, I think, like 78 clients right now in this area. We're only funded for up to 40 right now, so we don't have very many spots left for volunteers. We got people who's been doing it for about 17 years, I think our longest volunteer's been doing that right now. We would love, obviously, to have more funding and up the volunteers, but our max is 30, or 40, I apologize for that program. One big thing right now that we're looking for, and the reason, you know, I was happy that Melanie invited me out here today as well, because we need clients for that program. We're almost full with our volunteers, but we really need clients. So, if you have a loved one who you think would benefit from this kind of program, I think it's a great, great program. We vet all of our volunteers. Obviously, we have to do a federal background check, they have to do the fingerprints, they do the state background check, and then there's also, I think it's the registry, sexual offender registry, we have to check that as well. So, there's three different background checks that they have to go through in order to be a volunteer with us. So, it's not just gonna be a random person in your home. They're vetted. And they got the heart of gold, man. A lot of our volunteers, they just got the heart to give. It's really a beautiful thing to see in motion.
Any other questions?
I have one more, and then I'll leave everybody alone. The, I was just gonna say, I appreciate what you're doing in the companion program. I mean, anybody that's had to make the decision to put their elderly parents or whatever in a nursing home, that's not fun, and if this gets to keep them home a little longer, I think that's awesome.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. It really is, isn't it? It's a lot for a family member to take care of a loved one, too. I mean, when we have our family members and those who we love who age, like you just said, it's the hardest thing in the world to try to, you know, if you had to place them in a nursing home. So, you're probably doing everything that you can before you get to that point. So, this program's a really great program to provide that respite and allow them just to go to the store and live their life a little bit, you know? All right. Thank you guys so much.
I was gonna ask, on the foster grandparent, I mean, do we have people active here in Boyle?
Yes, so Boyle County is probably one of our most active so far in the foster grandparent program. I believe we have four volunteers there at the Head Start in Boyle County. So, I am very appreciative of the county and, you know, Boyle County doing their part for that program, and that's our most participation, I think, in one of our singler counties.
How do they, how do people go about registering or...
So, we do have a, we have a website, bluegrasscommunityaction.org. I also have cards. I tried to, and I was talking to Melanie about this as well, maybe doing like a banner to put, I know y'all, she was telling me about the banners y'all do, I think, on City Hall? So, I was thinking about doing one of those, but I have flyers and things, so I'll make sure that I get those over to the right people. Melanie was getting with me, and we was updating the website with the new information and everything. She made everything, you know, make sure it was correct and everything, so...
That's good.
Or just go to our website, bluegrasscommunityaction.org, and you'll have all the information on there. And like I said, we have tons of programs, but my job right now is to highlight these programs that are for seniors. And like the Commissioner said, our aging population right now, pretty soon, it's gonna be the first time in history that we have certain people over 55 years old compared to people under like 40. First time in history in the U.S., which is crazy, you know? So, it's coming up. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Excellent programs. I've just been notified, Commissioners, we're gonna skip the next item on the agenda. They've asked to be tabled until our next meeting. So, we'll move down to the first reading of ordinance number 2059, a zone change from 650 High Street. Madam Clerk, do you want to read that ordinance to us, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 2059, and ordinance changing the zone from multifamily residential RM3 to general business GB for approximately 2.443 acres, more or less of real property located at 650 High Street in the city of Danville, Kentucky.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion in the first reading?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2059.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, and Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Pete.
Yes.
Mayor Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sayers.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all, most curious. Resolution 2025-11-1001, fitness membership fee adjustment, Mr. Barton, approach.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. How are we all today? We good? I'm here to do what we all dread to do, but I'm here to discuss the Bunny Davis Fitness Center fitness membership adjustment. It's one of our, kind of our forgotten programs, because it's literally in the basement of the Bunny Davis, but we have over 100 monthly members, we have over 50 yearly members, and then we have over 50 walk-in members a month, or 50 walk-ins a month. So, we do have quite a few people that use the Fitness Center, but currently, we are down to only one working treadmill, where before, we had four to five. We've had our service contractor come out, Scheller's Fitness out of Lexington, they've come out, and they've said, I believe, Amber, the parts are out of stock, they don't make them for these treadmills anymore. So, they're basically telling us these treadmills are junk. So, unfortunately, the cost of this equipment is somewhere, to get the equipment to usable to where we had at least two more treadmills and two more ellipticals, the cost for that was gonna be a one-time fee, anywhere between $20,000 and $25,000, which we are not budgeted for. So, my task was to figure out a way to, to get some kind of funding in there to get these replaced. So, what I am recommending is, instead of outright buying, we're able to lease two to three treadmills and two ellipticals for the cost, and we've gotten quotes from two or three companies now, and they're all coming around $500 to $550 a month to replace these treadmills and ellipticals. And the way we could, the way we could get that cost is if we could raise our monthly fee from $15 to $20 a month, that would be a $500 monthly increase, and if we raised our daily fee of $4 to $5, that would be a monthly increase of $55. So, there we would get, that's how we could get our $550. We have, we have talked this over with the Park Commission, our Park Committee, they agreed to it, and I believe we've been polling our regulars in the morning that work out there every day, and I want to say, out of the 40, 50 people we've talked to, over 70% said, "Yeah, let's get some new equipment. I don't mind paying a little bit more." So, that's where we stand, so I'm asking you guys to approve from a $125 for a one-time yearly fee, we're gonna make that cost $175. The monthly fee of $15, we'd like to go to $20, and the daily fee of $4, we'd like to go to $5, if that's possible. And if you got any questions on anything, we'll try to answer them for you.
I just don't think how old that equipment might be.
We haven't had a fee increase in 10 years. I don't know how old that stuff is.
Those treadmills and ellipticals are 15 plus years old.
Yeah.
Is this a lease-to-own program?
Correct. And we don't know, we know the Bunny Davis, you know, the future's kind of in question there, but, you know, we gotta figure we're gonna at least be there two, three, four more years. So, if we're gonna offer this service, we need to be providing the service.
Yes, that's right. Chair, entertain a motion?
I would move for approval of a resolution 2025-11-1001.
Second.
Thank you both, and that would raise the yearly fee to $175 a year, the monthly fee to $20 per month, and the daily fee to $5.
That's correct. And we're gonna put all that money right back into it.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's, hold on, excuse me. All those in favor of passing Resolution 25-11-1001, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is Resolution 25-11-1002, police surplus equipment. Madam Clerk?
Yes, the Police Department is asking that we surplus a ballistic vest to Bergen Independent School Resource Officer. These vests are fitted to the officer themselves, and so we would have no value keeping it, so we're asking that we surplus it to Bergen Independent.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-11-1002.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second. Can I ask a quick question, Mayor? I was gonna ask, Tony, with something like, we've done this before, do we pass along any liability when we do that? I mean, if they, some failure at some point or anything, is that on us, or they take, that's on them? Okay.
Any other questions?
I would just say, this is with compensation, by the way. The cost is being absorbed by Bergen Schools. I believe it's $175.
Yeah, it's a relatively new vest, which is why they were willing to do that, and they have acquired our officer that it belonged to, and it will not fit anybody else. So, we can't, we can't put it on a different officer.
I was gonna ask that question.
Kevin? Wouldn't fit you?
Yep.
It would void the warrant if you put it on Kevin.
Yes, it would.
Let's call for the motion, and all those in favor of this, in favor of passing the motion for police surplus equipment to Bergen, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Next item is 2025-11-1003, IT surplus. Madam Clerk, do you have that one as well?
Yes, in your packet, you have a list of items from IT that they are asking to surplus. This will be done through GovDeals, like we usually do.
Okay. Is there a motion to surplus this equipment?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-11-1003.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. That was not for the audience, I'm sorry. Next item is the City Manager Report, oh, it's not about the City Manager, next item is a City Manager Report.
We actually have a item number nine, which is a Resolution 2005-11-1004, right-of-way abandonment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was in the hurry to get to you, huh?
You were.
Is there a motion to approve the right-of-way abandonment? Oh, let's make a motion, they want to have some discussion on that, haven't we?
I'll make a, go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-11-1004.
I will second your discussion.
All right, now, let's discuss this item.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission.
I'm sorry.
When 2168 was constructed, the old Lexington Avenue roadway bed was abandoned, and ultimately, the city was left with ownership of that property and has since been mowing it, and amounts to about 1.9 acres. That oftentimes happens with transportation projects, and these parcels like this get, just get grown up and become unusable remnant tracks and are leftovers, byproducts of those transportation projects. In this case, we've been trying to figure out an alternative use, instead of just taxpayers continuing to mow and just to maintain it. We have identified the information in your packet, which would relieve the city from the wasteful, what we consider just cost to maintain it, and it would also then support a significant economic development opportunity, which, which we think could be, will be described here in a minute. And then, further, we have an opportunity to enhance the trail system connectivity on that side of town, which is a drawing that's on your desk also, that we had Josh put together. So, I would like the City Attorney to walk you through the documents that's in front of you on this subject.
Sure, and y'all stop me at any time you have questions, and we'll be happy to explain it to you. I do want to introduce you to that we do have representatives from one of the property owners, which is the Bryant, or Bill Newcomb, Thomas Newcomb, and their engineer, Brad Miles, who are in the back of the room, and they're happy to address or come to the podium as they deem fit. But what we would, and I think they have some pictures that we'll show with you in a moment, too, of some of the things that have been discussed and would be a part of this, the resolution before you. But again, as the City Manager pointed out, the land that the city has there in that abandoned roadbed is just under two acres, and it is the old connectivity to Lexington prior to the completion of 2168, and that interchange where the stoplight is. There are two adjoining property owners, and under state law, when we abandon right-of-way, it inures to the benefit of those that immediately join it. One property owner is Cornerstone Assembly of God, and the second owner is Newcomb Oil Company. And what those two entities have amongst themselves proposed is, and there's a diagram, I believe, in your packet, if you, there's a map, Earl, can you hand it up so they can see what you're looking for in your packet?
Should be on your desk.
Easily described, okay, great, thank you. So, you can see that the Far Western Track is what's owned by Newcomb Oil Company, and the, excuse me, the Far Eastern Track, the Far Western Track is what is owned by Cornerstone Assembly of God, and then you can see the diagonal portion in between it, which is the city's right-of-way or the old roadbed. And in order to assist the property owners in kind of squaring up their properties, so you would have more viable tracks for development, then there are two little triangles that they would propose swapping with one another, which would create a track one and track two that's identified on your image, and then with the city, again, abandoning its right-of-way, and again, would allow both Cornerstone and Newcomb to have approximate rectangular lots that are shown there on your page. Additionally, those parties have a memorandum of understanding between them to seek the city's abandonment, and that is in your packet as well, where they have a consent to ask the city to do it, and then admit that they will gain ownership after it is over. And future use, we're recognizing in your resolution, for the highest and best use, very well, very well may require a zoning map amendment of those parcels with the remnant tracks to clean up any zoning issues, and the resolution before you, again, would find it necessary and appropriate in order to close the roadway and abandon it, and also to support the... and also to support the advancement of the city's trail system. There's a second drawing on your page there, and City Manager may want to discuss that as, as well, or I'd be happy to. Earl, do you wanna do that, or do you want me to?
Go ahead and continue, since you're rolling.
Okay.
Yeah.
The map is color-coded, so you will see the, there is a, um, a turquoise section there that would, again, assist with the connectivity to the trail system, and then an orange section there that would allow for additional parking. Now, this is not the part that's being abandoned. This is the remaining portion of the city's right-of-way that would now be utilized as opposed to simply being maintained. So these two things together would allow full utilization of the city's existing right-of-way, a section of it being abandoned on the first image, and the second image showing how it would be developed to assist the trail system, with parking, and again, connectivity to the 2168 trail. And then last, it would allow also, um, in, in addition to the trail system benefit and, um, a, a decrease in maintenance costs for the city, would allow the support of an economic development opportunity on the, the track owned by, um, Newcombe Oil Company, and again, potential, um, improvement or expansion on the Cornerstone Assembly of, of God track, with the city's ownership being removed. So those, that's a lot, um, that I've spoken to, to, to try to give an overview of the project. And I don't know, Bill or Thomas, would you like to approach? I think they have some things that they would like to show you as far as...
Before we do that, though, can I get clarification?
Sure.
We got two, uh, potential landowners. We've got track one, two, three, four. Do you find for the, uh, commission, who's gonna own what?
Yes. So, right now, as it exists today, track one on your map is owned by Newcombe Oil Company. Track two is owned by Cornerstone Assembly of God. So you can see that there are long rectangular shapes. So track two and one will be swapped by Cornerstone and, um, Newcombe Oil Company, so as to allow those two rectangular-ish pieces. And track three would be conveyed by the city to Cornerstone. Track four would be conveyed by the city to Newcombe Oil Company. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're all on the same page now.
All right, Bill?
Good afternoon. I am Bill Newcombe with Newcombe Oil Company in Barstown. We operate the five-star food marts. Uh, we operate the two that are here in Danville. I'm not exactly sure what you're looking at, but I have another map that I could hand out that might be beneficial. So the, um, you can see the outline of the church there. Here's, this is the church, and, uh, as you can see, their, their property is triangular shaped. Our property is triangular shaped, and you have the old right-of-way that runs between them. Our proposal is to, that we would trade the church .74 acres, and they would give us .74 acres. So we would end up with a square that you see, um... And then on page two would be how we're proposing to develop it, develop the, uh, track. It would be similar to what we have built at, uh, Ingalls Drive and at, uh, Denmark Drive. Page three shows, uh, a map, a colored map of the property with the church to the left. Page four are pictures of a store that we built in Shelbyville. It's a little bit different design than the two stores we have in Danville now. We think it better fits the area. So we would propose to build a store similar to that. The last two pages are a different designed canopy that we're proposing to build.
All that we can approve tonight, though, is the right-of-way abandonment, right?
That's right. So the goal tonight was to give you an overview of the request. The request before you tonight is merely to abandon the right-of-way, and in order to facilitate the project, what we attempt to do is give you a, a summary of the goals and objectives of the complete plan, to give you complete information, and so you'll know intentions and motives moving forward, and to, again, support also, really, particularly, the resolution does three things. It, it does support the abandonment of the right-of-way, which will happen by subsequent ordinance, and then it will support the, um, the additional trailhead, um, and trail connectivity projects. So it'll give staff the green light to, again, to utilize the remaining portion of the right-of-way that's not being abandoned, and then also three, to support the economic development initiative. And, and that is just, again, at a 10,000-foot level today, knowing that there will be additional steps that would have to take place after tonight.
Essentially, we're abandoning the roadbed, which ordinarily goes to the adjoining property owners anyhow?
That's correct, by operation of law, it does. But there, there's a statutory process for doing it, so it does require the ordinance, but yes.
But then at that point, the trading of the triangles is between the two new...
That's, that's right.
Property owners.
That's right.
We're abandoning three of the four.
Right. And so what's, what we, when we receive a request like that, staff just requested that there be a plan, like, once those are abandoned, how's, how are they going to be utilized? So the, the documents before you are a response of the parties to that question from staff on how they would be utilized.
Thank you.
The parking spaces on this map, it's, this is the land here, so it would be behind it, correct?
That is correct. So that is on the other side of...
The road.
Of the road. That's correct. Again, right. So then that would be the last section of the old roadbed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking there's gonna be a zone change necessary.
Well, and the resolution addresses that, Mayor. So it, we say in... The fifth whereas paragraph on page one, and it says, whereas the proposed highest and best use of the property will require the submission of an application for a zoning map amendment as the subject parcels are a result of Kentucky Department of Transportation Improvement Projects that are unviable and economic remnant tracks. So again, this was a large farm at one time, that was all zoned agricultural, and then these tracks on this side of the property, along with the city's roadbed, are, are the remnants that, that remain. A, a total, all in all, I can't remember the acreage, but maybe all of it is five acres, something like that.
And I guess the, the other question I have is that, as I look at the new, complete track two, this proposal only takes care of half of that new track two. This proposal, that would leave, that would leave a, another vacant lot there.
Track, the, what is outlined in blue on this map?
Yes.
Shows the entire Newcombe Oil Track is in blue, and what, but there is a deviation between the eastern part of their track and the western part of their track, that they would propose some other type, uh, of development. So the full, the full lot there, um, is not going to be utilized based upon this drawing for their intended purpose. It would create another usable track, so to speak.
Well, that's, that's my question, okay. And then as far as, uh, track, the new track one, it leaves the church with a lot of potential to expand as well to the, I guess to the south of where the church is located.
Yes, sir, they, they verbalized. I'll, I'll jump in there, 'cause I've spoken the most with them. But they, they were struggling in what to do with their, their property, because it doesn't, doesn't all lay, uh, currently with the roadbed is elevated, so it makes access and views, uh, difficult. And so by them having control of the, the roadbed, they can remove it, and they can do grading. It, it, it makes, then therefore, a different boundary for them to, to have a different building line on their property. So they really, they have a, a strong opportunity now to do some of those multipurpose buildings that, that churches often need, and, and it gives them an opportunity then to grow their parking area and grow into the space now for the first time.
Okay. Cause it, could look quite different, in a good way, though. Okay. All right, any other questions? You jumped in late, I'm sorry.
Is that it? Thank you very much.
Now, now I know why I tried to skip that one, I'm just joking. Okay, um, we do have a motion and a second. We've had lots of discussion. Any other, any further discussion? Hearing none, then the mayor would like to call for the question. All those in favor of approving 2025-11-10-04, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Now the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, again. The, um, first thing, we always go over some dates that are coming. Uh, of course, tomorrow, City Hall's closed. The, um, let me fix my screen. The City Hall's closed, the, um, November 20th is Coffee with a Planner. We would like to point that out. Hannah's, uh, the P&amp;Z Director is, is having her form of the Coffee with Commissioners meeting. She does that at the Hub at 10:00 AM to noon. The next Commission meeting's the 24th. Of course, Thanksgiving is at the end of the month. City Hall's closed the 27th and 28th for Thanksgiving. November 28th is the tree lighting, and Salvation Army toy drive from 4:30 to 7:00. December 6th, we would like to get that on your calendars, is the Small Town Christmas that Saturday and parade. The Christmas is from noon to 5:00, and the parade is at 6:30. I think Ashley's got another meeting, since I wrote this, that I wanted to make sure that she verbalized with you all.
Yes, we have the cemetery workshop scheduled for November 20th, here at City Hall at 3:00 PM.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, the, the next thing, and I, I wanna make sure I point out, and this is not a, um, to, something that, that I necessarily want to tiptoe through. It's something I wanna be direct with, is that misinformation that is, that is getting out. Social media today is a, is getting a little bit pervasive in its communication, and its willingness to take bits and pieces and to communicate that out into the, into the world as if it's a, it's a story. The, if a newspaper traditionally would do that, there would be follow-up, a lot of times, to get context of the story and, and such. That really doesn't happen now. That created a little bit of turmoil for the community, not necessarily the city, when, when a, an old report that was done by the state in 2014 was, which we leave things like that up on our website intentionally, because we, you know, we, we wanna be transparent. We don't want to, um, decrease access to information. We wanna increase access to information, even if it's an old report that somewhere down the road, we may pull information out of that report and try to reuse it, right? So in this case, uh, the screenshot was, was published on Facebook of the intersection at Walnut and Stanford Avenue, which is a terrific idea. We, we talked about it way back then. We still support it. We think it, that is a good idea. However, the nuance of that is, is it's absolutely not a city project. It's, it's not been proposed as a city project in the short term. We have talked about that as a project, and so we did a project profile with the Transportation Cabinet, and we, we produced a summary of that, and that's also on our website. However, Transportation Cabinet is not proposing that, that as a project, and the result of, of, of the lack of verification of whether or not that was actually a city project or not was a couple different things. It, it ultimately led to some of the folks in, in town taking time and, and trying to adapt their properties. Well, what if this does happen? What's our property gonna look like? Well, we, we had to quiet those nerves, and we had to calm those nerves, as there was some pretty, pretty, um, um, there was some concern expressed, rightly so. The, um, other thing is, is that the Advocate Messenger picked it up and ran with it, and also then picked some old information up and published information like the city was gonna do a $600,000 project at Jenny Rogers. That was already done way, way long ago, right? The, um, so we, you know, that was a front-page story. None of that was true, right? It just is factually not true. I don't know how to combat that at all times. We, we, when you can take a clip off of a public meeting and, and publish a statement out of that as if it's true and in, in context, then a lot of times, it gets confused. It happened again today, um, with the Warm and Shelter discussion, where the, where we, we were tied in with that a little bit with, because we were with the MS Director. The, there was a, a statement made by the county. I don't know what that was, I wasn't there, and I'm not wanting to repeat it, but, uh, it was on social media, and the MS Director suggested to us that, hey, could you reach out to the author and, and, and to, to try to get that pulled down? Well, a little bit of that was, well, the city's wanting me to not do something or controlling this. That's not the case. We, we were just simply responding to what the MS Director wanted us to do. And what we would just suggest to anybody posting something on social media, be careful with posting information that may not be accurate or may not be in, in the correct context with what you're saying. And, and it does create concern for citizens, and it does create a reaction that sometimes is not, not necessarily the best, and, and also not what either party is, is, the city or the county is actually verbalizing or saying, right? And so I just wanna verbalize that, let you know, we knew about it, and, and we, uh, try to reach out when, when there's an opportunity to reach out. We, we did reach out to the newspaper about the roundabout. We, we didn't get any, uh, opportunity to clarify that. There's not a follow-up story clarifying that, not yet. Uh, we, we would hope they would do that. That's still not been done. So I just wanna let you know, we were aware of that, let you know, we tried to address it. But to also let the community at large know that if, if you do see something on social media and that you are concerned, and it is being presented as if it's a fact, then please, please just reach out, and, and will, somebody at City Hall, hopefully, can steer you towards the correct information. If, if, if we can, our goal is to be as transparent as possible, and, and, you know, we leave those plans up there for that reason. So I, I did wanna go, uh, into that a little bit, and I appreciate the, the floor to, to do that. We were excited about some of the, uh, special activities we, we have participated in. The, uh, Melanie, as the Community Development Director, did a good job representing the city and, and leading us. I got to participate with her at the, uh, Shopping Center Association. We participated with the other cities of Madisonville, Hopkinsville, Elizabeth Town, Nicholasville, Somerset, and Middlesbrough. We did, uh, learn a lot about retail recruitment there, and, and do think we've made some inroads, and, and certainly excited about following up with, uh, the next opportunity for that. There, um, what we have learned in, in dealing with, uh, the, the retail recruitment side is, is the developing a relationship with some of the retailers, following that up with additional, uh, touches and, and, and communications and networking opportunities in order to get them engaged in our community. And so we will have to necessarily follow up with you on that to plan some, uh, an event that, that we think, uh, would be an opportunity next year. We also had the opportunity recently to go to the ICMA Conference. We did learn, uh, quite a bit about, uh, financing... bit about financing of various things that the cities get engaged with, development work. The IRB is a good example of, on the bypass of something that the city participated with the developer on, other incentives and things like that. So it was definitely a worthwhile trip. This past week, we, Melanie and I was able to attend the Kentucky Association of Economic Developers meeting towards the end of the week. We hadn't had an opportunity to meet with Jeff Noel. He's the Secretary of the Cabinet for Economic Development. We met with him and continued to develop those relationships. And so it's been a busy four to six weeks in terms of building relationships on behalf of the city with those outside of the city. And so we have been appreciative of that opportunity. And if you want to follow up on any of those subjects and want to talk about it, we'd be happy to sit down with you as long as you need. Coffee with Commissioners. The next one up is Commissioner Peak. That is December the 9th at the Hub, 8:00 AM. Would like to point that out now. And that will be enough for me. Is there anything else y'all want to ask or talk about?
Hub on Main Street.
Oh. I just want to make one comment, and that was about the newspaper article. I did get several calls about it, and I just simply said, it's kind of odd to have a front-page news story about the city and no city employees were quoted in it. Just a crazy article. Yeah. Comments to the city manager. Thank you, sir. Next, we're at the point where we have our second here to public, and this time we can recognize folks in the public who desire to talk to the commission about things that are not on today's planned agenda.
Mayor, before we do that, if we can just remind, I think it'd be a good public service announcement at this time, remind the public of the official chain of, or the official communication items that the city does utilize in order to transfer correct information to the people here in town, one of which citizens are free to sign up for, the city's weekly newsletter, which is produced every Friday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, there is a leaflet typically in your water bill, and then the city does push information to Facebook on its official page. So for those looking for direct communication from the city of Danville, those three areas and possibly others exist, but those would be the three primary ways to receive or digest official communications from the city of Danville.
Good point. Thank you, sir. Anyone desire to speak to the commission tonight? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Come on, come on down.
My name's James Phillips again. I came to, um, ask about the, our parking on our Third Street, Main Street. There's a lot of cars can't seem to get into parking spaces. Their tires are stuck out in the road. The pickup trucks are out in the middle of the road. Makes it really hard to get through there. I don't know what could be done to address the issue on it, whether, probably have to go back to school and learn how to park, but not going to be able to get that done. But it is a pretty good concern. They're always, I mean, Third Street coming up there, that's tight as heck by the hub side there. Down that, they're always in the road. And in front of the hospital and on Main Street, all up and down Main Street, two-thirds can't get in the parking space. Their tails are stuck out, front ends are stuck out. It's an issue a little bit. I don't know what we can do about it, but it's a little bit of a concern tearing up cars, especially when you drive a little bigger truck, a little bigger vehicles, SUVs. Then I have a question here on the skate park cost. I was at the county meeting and the city meeting, and I heard two different sets of numbers. So I was just trying to clarify by asking where we have this, I think Mr. Barton's here and the city commissioner manager. At the county meeting, the cost was quoted at $475,000 in 2020, and the cost is not going to cost that now in 2025. But then I thought I heard at a meeting, two weeks, the next meeting at the city meeting, I heard a $475,000 quote as a agreed and confirmed price. So I'm trying to find out if that is agreed or confirmed or came to in any way. Because that's a large difference. $475,000 in 20.
The final cost of the skate parks not formalized. What the city did at the last meeting, I'll let Josh describe it, was to simply contract with the vendor to develop the final scope.
I understand that.
Is, that's the limit. Now, how much did the county budget this year, Josh?
The best we can tell, the city budgeted $150,000. The county budgeted $250,000. So Tommy and I have been working under assumption of 400,000 is how much we have to work with this fiscal year. We'll have a contract, I think, next meeting. Is that right, Tommy? We met with the skate park folks late last week, and they're putting the contract together. We're trying to do something, because I know the county's a little bit interested in maybe going over that $400,000 mark if that gets us what we want. So their contract's going to read with some language about, we're going to start at 400,000. They're going to offer some alternatives above that. We can maybe phase it in. So right now, we're working on assumption of 400,000 because that's what was approved in the budget.
Because I, well, I was there and I heard the $475 quoted at the county meeting at the 20 cost. And then here I heard, I found out at $475. Just trying to find out for sure where we're at in them numbers there, because that's a big difference between 4 and 800,000. And, let's see.
You can contribute to that 800,000.
Well, I'll tell you what, because of that, we had lost a lot of money twice. We lost money in our park system. One was convicted, one was just wiped under the door. So it is a concern for me because during that time, I spent about $40,000 buying equipment for kids, trophies, when we didn't have no money in our park system. I supplied every kid that participated in the senior league program.
Mayor, that's 30 minutes.
At that time, for four years plus.
Thank you, sir. She said your three minutes have expired.
I put a lot of money in this county and our athletes here.
Oh, I know you have.
Yeah, all my sons are athletes. They've all participated, college and pro level. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think I might be out of town by time.
Yes.
One other question. If you have a special meeting, are public allowed to it? Or is that just something that is called that you're not allowed to attend?
All of our special meetings are.
Okay. How would I find out about that? Is it listed or like, is it on social media?
We publish special call meetings unless, normally those are a workshop-style format or specific item, single item topic and don't include a public discussion. Public theoretically aren't, wouldn't necessarily be speaking unless there was a specific, here the public section of that agenda. The agenda is published in the same place and location as the other agendas. A lot of times on our website and Ashley.
We do have an agenda distribution email if you want to be on that. If you'll just leave me your email address, if you want to come over and write it down when you're done, I'll add you to that and you'll get all the agendas.
I don't have to talk every time.
Just keep showing up, yeah. Well, we appreciate you showing up, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else? All right, let's move to the next item then. I just skipped the next item too, though, right? Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that participated in making the luncheon happen on Friday for the veterans, being there and being able to serve them. They're very humble and very appreciative of everything you do for them. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that was, you know, in that and made that happen for the community.
Yeah.
And in today's.
Yeah.
You can cover that again.
No, go ahead.
I was going to bring up the, Saturday, they had the literacy bell celebration. They gather the kids that have read their first book and they give them prizes and they get to ring the bell in our schoolhouse. And I think there was.
Thirty-something, right?
Yeah, there was 42 signed or that qualified and 35 were there. It was, it was a lot of fun. They enjoy it and they get to feel special. I enjoyed it too.
Yeah, and the weather was nice for it, too. Yeah. And I was going to say something about the veterans dinner last Friday and about the veterans program today at noontime. This veteran was AWOL from both of them, but he had other personal obligations. But it's nice the way this community does turn out to honor and show respect to veterans. Other commissioner comments?
And that was a very nice presentation today at the county and for the national or.
The Kentucky Veterans Hall of Fame, the monument is now installed. It's an additional black granite next to the Killed in Action Monument up in front of the courthouse. The county did a great job with replacing the original landscaping with the nice hardscape that complemented the, really, the brick that was there and the improvements to Whisegar Park. So it's a, it's a, a nice cleaned-up addition to an important aspect of our community and properly, probably demonstrates a level of respect that probably those monuments should have had long ago. So it was a good upgrade. The timing was correct with the new addition of the monument and included a walkable area around the Star Monument that's there, the Blue Star Monument that's there. And so it's a, it's a nice upgrade to that area, space at the courthouse.
And recognizing our Hall of Fame veterans, Jack Hendrickson, General Hunt, that are on that monument.
Yep.
And then I want to mention personally, because I talked to somebody last week, that that bench that's out there, somebody, they refurbished the bench, but not, I don't know that people know, Dino volunteered and painted that at their factory here in Danville.
That's awesome.
So it would last for a long time.
Did not know that.
That's cool.
Other comments? Hearing none, let's go to the next item then. Payment of the bills is the next item. Is there a motion to pay our bills as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve. Did you put a new bill as you said or no?
Yes, there was, we made a last-minute amendment, but it's updated in your packet.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $1,413,515.25 as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
I was just going to make a note for you all, just in case you noticed, we did have to do a last-minute update and add in the Brass Band Festival. Okay.
Who is she?
Where'd she come from?
She worked here.
Thank you, Ms. Compton. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying our bills, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, motion carries, bills paid. Financial update for Ms. Compton. That's why she came back.
There was just a slight IT issue.
Okay.
Not with the meeting, which is fantastic. Okay. So in your packet, you have, it's a little different than the monthly reports I send over, just because this one will be posted to her website, and it's meant to, A, give the public an update on where we're at as of September 30th quarter, which is the first quarter of 2026 fiscal year. And it gives, it's not quite as detailed as the information you all get. It's formatted a little differently, but it's meant to let the public know where we're at financially for the things that are really important. They may not want the nitty-gritty details. And if they do, they can certainly come ask for it. But it's also meant to just provide information and transparency. The goal is that we do get those out every quarter. We hadn't in the last year, just because we did have in the finance department a lot going on. We had a lot of audits going on, update of our business license software, and all that does unfortunately take away time for those extra things that we want to do. But ideally, we get those out every quarter and we are able to provide the public with an update of our finances. Just as a recap, total budget appropriations, and for the public's sake, appropriations are the same as, it's a different word for budgeted expenses, how much money we're planning to spend in the current year. For the current fiscal year, FY 25-26 is $74,450,016, which is a pretty big jump from the last year. Our ending amended budget was $59 million. And if you all remember from our budget season, for those of you that were here, we did budget in the Parks Department $20 million for a potential, no action has been taken yet, $20 million indoor recreation center to help further our discussions. So it is a little skewed. It's skewed high due to that, but sometimes those budgetary mechanisms are helpful to help the discussion for the commission to have publicly, as well as for direction for Josh and Tommy to take on certain things. But no action on any sort of indoor recreation facility has been taken. So we hope everyone hears, I'm going to say it like four more times, no action has been taken.
Would you like for us to take action on that tonight?
No, nope. No action is being taken tonight either. This is informational only.
How about, is, any, yeah, any action being taken on that?
Hmm, maybe. No, no action is taken. So this, I've got some slides just because, A, you all don't want to just listen to me talk. Some visual is helpful for the public as well. And the information in your packet does not translate well to our screens. So this is just reformatted into some charts, but it's the same dollars that's on the information in your packet. And the information in your packet will be posted to our website. Maybe to, nope, tomorrow we are closed, so maybe Wednesday. General fund revenues are pretty much on track compared to our budget. As of September 30th, it'll come as no surprise that your largest category of revenue is your licensing fees. That comes from your occupational tax and your, so your payroll withholding and your net profit. Property tax, a lot of people are starting to get those bills in the mail. We're getting a lot of calls asking for those. You can get those from your Boyle County Sheriff's Office. We don't actually produce the bill ourselves here at City Hall. Those get collected throughout November and December. Those are the highest collection that you see for property tax. So year-to-date, we have very minimal things to report related to property taxes. So as of September 30th, you've collected $5,327,000 in your license and fee category, $46,000 in property taxes, very minor penalties and forfeitures, service revenue, which includes your 911 service fees. It includes your agreements with other entities, fire protection, $289,000. Other recurring revenue, which includes school resource officer revenue, insurance proceeds, investment revenue is at $232,000 as of September 30th. And your intergovernmental revenue, which is revenue that you receive from other governmental entities, as the name would suggest, is at $108,000. That category, especially compared to last year, varies significantly because we get, that is grants. A lot of grants go into that category. This time last year, I believe we had received potentially some of our Safe Streets for All grant that had elevated it compared to this year. We also got a couple of. We also got a couple of, um, we have some grants anticipated later in the year, but we have not yet received them. So like I said, total government, total revenue in the general fund for the year, six million, thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So general fund expenses for the year total as of so compared to last fiscal year. So what we're looking at here on this chart for the folks in the public that can't read those tiny little labels, your green column is your current year, so FY twenty-six, your blue column is the same point in time last fiscal year. Two big things to note compared to last year, we did do salary increases for staff for the current budget year of, I believe, two, three point nine percent. It was our COLA for the year. We also saw an increase in our health insurance, um, which wasn't surprising to, um, for the current year. So that does increase your expenses year over year. Your base operations were pretty similar. But we did also add a few personnel within the general fund. We did add, um, for the total year, we've added some fire, firefighters. We've also seen some retirement, so that's gonna fluctuate quite a bit. And I think that's why you see a very similar expense to prior year, as we did have some retirements in the current year. Very on trend for the year. Each individual department is broken out with its cost center. Police and Fire are two largest cost centers, but they are also our largest by personnel by a long shot. Total within the packet itself, it does compare it to your target budget. Sometimes those are skewed due to the time of year. For instance, Finance Department, we see a big forty thousand dollar charge for our property tax rolls in August. And so that doesn't get equalized out over the current year. But we do, um, we do look at monthly where folks are at in their budget, where they should be. And I, I like to just have conversations if there's anybody that I think is, you know, oh, this seems a little high for, for the current year. If there's anything specific I wanted to point out. And I'm just gonna keep going through these pretty quick, but did you guys want to talk about anything specific in general funds? All right. So our utility fund, uh, that is the cost and associated charges that are billed through your water bills for all operations of water sewer service that the city provides to the city, the county and surrounding areas. Total revenue for water related fees for the current year, one point seven million. Sewer fees, one point six nine million. They do have some small recurring revenue. It's not a major source for the utility fund. At sixty-eight, I'm sorry, sixty-two thousand for the year. Both of those are, or I'm sorry, all three of those categories are slightly ahead of budget for the current year, not a ton. You know, lots of, people would think a lot of revenue is great, but when you have a charged service, if, if it's extremely high compared to your budget, there, there could be an issue. We don't see any of that. The utility fund is also budgeted for a pretty large, a one point one million dollar grant. Or I'm sorry, yeah, one point four million dollar grant from the federal EDA. We are also anticipating some bond, I'm sorry, some KIA loan money later in the year for some capital projects. So far in the year, we have not received any of that, um, just due to the phase of the projects that they're related to. We have a total of two point three million in operating expenses for the current year for the water funds. That is all the costs associated with your water plant, your wastewater plants, the guys out in the field setting meters. You have about, you have five hundred thousand for the year currently in your debt service. A very minor amount of non-operating expenses, one hundred and twenty-six thousand. And you've got about a nine point, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand in capital expenses. That's gonna be related completely to large ongoing projects. Mostly, I think it's the wrap-up of Spears Creek. Yep. A few other smaller projects are ongoing. Your connection to the McKinney Water District is ongoing. Your improvements for Balls Branch are ongoing. And Marshall's got quite a few other things in the pipeline coming soon. And our Parks Fund, and I wish Ms., I forget his name, Mr. Ja, was it Mr. James? I hadn't stuck around. We budgeted in the current year capital for the Parks Fund in the amount of twenty-two million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, twenty thousand, twenty million of which has had no action and no plan to action to date. But it does list out the other projects that we have budgeted funds for. And it also lists the contributions that we have, have received, or I'm sorry, the contributions that we will receive for those county projects that we are partnering with them on. But, uh, year to date, or September, as of September thirtieth, we have twenty-six thousand in service revenue for the parks that they've generated, a hundred and nineteen thousand in their program revenue that they've created. Couple of small categories, one point eight, or I'm sorry, one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars in other revenue, two thousand in sponsorships. I do want to point out compared to last year, sponsorships looks very low, but that was due to some larger sponsorships for Jenny Rogers that we got last year at the beginning of the year that we won't receive again. They were one-time sponsorships for their rooms. Our intergovernmental revenue in, um, the Parks Department consists of some grants, but also the contribution from the fiscal court. In total, let's see. And then also our general fund transfer year to date, which is two hundred and eighteen thousand. Expenses compare in several categories quite a bit under for the Parks Department where we were last year. I think that's just a mechanism of Tommy having been here a full year plus now being able to manage his departments in the way he, he sees best and having someone there that consistently for that amount of time. Your Millennium Park compared to September thirtieth of twenty-five fiscal year is actually down about ten thousand dollars, which is really good. Your fitness center is down two. You did see a little bit of a, compared to the prior year increase at your pool for this time period, but I do think we've, the, the longer the pool exists, the more it's gonna cost us just in maintenance and repairs. Jenny Rogers, I think they've had about a year, maybe a year and a half of full operations at Jenny Rogers. So we're really learning what it takes to operate it and maintain it with the programs that are running in and out of there. And then capital, just the, compared to last fiscal year where we were wrapping up some big projects, you've just not seen quite as many capital expenses in the Parks Fund at September thirtieth. So this was, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a narrative, just for the public's sake, there'll be narrative with the numbers just because you will be unfamiliar with what goes into Millennium Park and what goes into intergovernmental revenues for a specific fund. So that'll be, that'll come along with the, um, the packet online. We'll also have a little bit of information about your, less, your minor funds, like your municipal fund or cemetery fund, stormwater fund. Those are just not quite as asked about financially. So that is it in a nutshell.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Compton?
And just a reminder, the taxes, our property taxes did not increase this year.
Property tax rates did not increase this year. If your property tax bill goes up, I would encourage you to look at your assessed value of your home because that means the property value administrator, the PVA, has, has valued your home as more, which then a rate that even if it's lower than it was last year, which it is, the math could still make your property tax bill in total increase. I believe Boyle County Fiscal Court also took the compensating rate, but I don't know about the other taxing jurisdictions that may be on your tax bill. And then you also, if you are in the Danville City School System, you will receive a fully separate tax bill from Danville School System.
And then I, and I just, I know maybe this is not the correct time, but I just want, since you're here, to clarify. I've gotten a couple of questions from citizens about Danville having a restaurant tax. We don't have a restaurant tax.
Does not have a restaurant tax. We are constitutionally currently prohibited from having a restaurant tax.
Right. I think a couple, and I had mentioned that to you before, that maybe a restaurant has on their bill receipt, Danville tax.
I, I believe there is a restaurant or two that says Danville tax. We can't mandate that they change it.
Right, no.
We would like that they change it.
I just want to say that that's not a city of Danville tax.
Not a city of Danville restaurant tax, and the city of Danville does not get any sort of sales tax that you may or may not pay at any restaurant or establishment in the city of Danville.
So, so what is that on the bill?
That's a great question. That's a great question.
Well, put the word out that the city would love to have a restaurant tax.
City would love to have a restaurant tax.
Citizens get that approved for us. We can't do it by ourselves.
We, and the, a restaurant tax, you know, ideally, if, if the city had one, it is constitutionally, or I guess constitutionally is not the right word, statutorily mandated that it be spent on certain things, any funds derived. But we are prohibited due to a historical class system that the state does not formally utilize anymore.
I, I would only add that there's, there's constitutional objection to that and ongoing litigation surrounding that matter. So that, while her comments are appreciated, they're not definitive in the area as it's a developing area of the law under current litigation status before the Kentucky Supreme Court.
Maybe, maybe. Josh just had a good thought. Maybe it could be the alcohol tax. I'd have to see a tax, a receipt to, to do the math myself, but I've not seen anybody specifically put that on there. And I think that would be a, a hard one to program. But maybe.
Great report. Great questions, great comments.
And thank you for the report. It's very thorough.
All right, let's move on then. Next item, uh, Marshall Carrier. Twenty twenty-five eleven ten oh five, HDR contract, amendment number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item is in regards to an amendment to the scope of work and fee for water system hydraulic modeling services to help the city supplement data needs and water provision to current and future customers. So roundabout way of saying HDR is a consultant for the city of Danville. And anytime, like, for example, if we, if there's a localized development coming into town, like Center Estates, for example, or any subdivision around, around the city or the county, typically, um, the contractor developer will have someone on hand do, to do a localized hydraulics analysis for their water supply. So typically what we do is the city is take that and introduce that into our system-wide model that HDR has developed to make sure everything jives with what they're telling us data-wise on, on water provision for that development. So, um, this is just an extension of those services. There's actually a typo on the agenda. Instead of thirty, uh, fifty thousand dollars, it's actually thirty thousand dollars. But this is to, um, this is to allow HDR to continue those same services for an additional thirty thousand dollars as amendment number nine to their contract.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five eleven ten oh five.
Thank you, ma'am. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Here and then, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Carrier, you have the next one as well.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item is regarding KIA funding commitment letters from the city. And so Lee touched upon some, some capital costs upcoming in the future. One of those is the Clark's Run Phase Two Santeri Sewer Project, which we've recently advertised for bid and we've gotten bids on that job. We haven't awarded it yet. We plan to award that in the next commission meeting, hopefully. But in researching funding information for that, I came across some, some things that felt like they were not necessarily addressed between the city and KIA. So when, in talking with KIA, uh, we don't have record that they provided these letters to us just yet. I'm not, I don't have record that they did. They haven't said that they have record that they have provided. So what I did was reach out to KIA and request all these letters in one resolution to, to make sure that we have everything accounted for on our side budgetarily. So if you remember, I've, I've discussed some of the lead and copper projects in commission meetings previously and in various updates for utilities. So there's three of those projects as well as the Clark, Clark's Run Phase Two Sewer Project. So I also provided a Excel breakdown to you all that, that I've been using Thank you, Lee. So you have a, you have an Excel breakdown of the fund, so just real quickly, we'll go through those. The first lead and copper project is three point two five million. We have a KIA SRF loan value of two point three two. Local match is nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars. So the good thing about these lead and copper projects, they were, they, they came at a time in twenty-three and twenty-four that they were very rapid in coming out to the public. So we wanted to go ahead and, and, uh, initialize our commitment to doing those projects for the public and, and well, as well to adhere to the regulatory requirements. That, you know, we have requirements in twenty twenty-four, we'll have more in twenty twenty-seven and, and technically for the next ten years. So we wanted to go ahead and partake in that with KIA. So some of those loans, like for example, that first one has a forgiveness of one point three three million dollars, which is really good, on a loan value of two point three two million. So that's what that column exemplifies there. So the next one is two hundred and fourteen thousand. The forgiveness is two hundred and fourteen thousand, which is good. The next one is one point two four million dollars. Forgiveness is eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, which is good. The Clark's Run Phase Two, that's a sewer project. We initially asked for seven point six two million dollars. So we got a loan value of five point five two six, five million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Forgiveness on that's four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty-seven cents. So that next column over there in the other, that, that one point nine nine six million dollars is an EDA grant that we got for that project also. So when I show a NA in that local match difference, so for a lot of these loans, you know, I have a, a local match column in, in there detailed. For this particular one, with that EDA grant money, we discussed, I think I've talked with you all before about how we work with KIA. with you all before about how we worked with KIA for that 5.526, that became our local match. So we didn't have to have a local match money from this, on the city's behalf for, to help with rates for our customers in the future, so. Long story short, these are 20-year loans. They have varying interest rates. The first one, I believe, is 1.25%. The second one is 0%, it's a 100% forgivable. The third is 1.25%, and the last one is .5%. So very good interest rates. That's why we try to, try to keep good communication and efforts with KIA and SRF. So this just exemplifies that. I just want to make sure that we got all our paperwork and finances together and make sure that we're in good shape with KIA. So that's what this is for, requesting approval of all four commitment letters.
Is there, is there a motion? Big numbers. But you do good work, ma'am. We appreciate that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-11-1006.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second? I'll second it. I'll get you. Properly moved and second. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for getting all the paperwork, you know, making sure that everything's in line because that's important. So I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Carrier, you have the next one as well.
I think it's Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Josh.
Yeah, I think Marshall's done. So our first item is, in your package, you have a scope and feed from Bran Center Carroll in the amount of $38,000. This is, this has kind of been born out of the initial meetings staff has had with the hospital related to the, in memorandum of agreement, we came, we approved, you all approved at the last meeting to discuss indoor recreation. This is to kind of take us through a schematic and a conceptual design of an indoor rec facility attached to the, the back of the wellness center. You know, Tommy and I have kind of been through this several times figuring out what we need, and I think we're at a point where the city really, we really know the city and county parks. We, we know what we need, but I think bringing the hospital in and in, and kind of incorporating them into this process is going to require us to go through some of these steps again of like, what does that space look like? Especially the connection between the indoor rec facility, the gymnasiums, which is really what we're, we're pursuing here with their facility, the connection between the two. So this 38,000 will take us through that process and get us to a conceptual design that they can then provide cost estimates for, so the hospital, as they commit to this expansion, can, can know what they're getting into as far as the cost standpoint. We get them some roundabout costs, but this will really dial it in. So that's what this 38,000 will do. They have, they have agreed to split this cost with us, so the city would be in for 19,000, and the hospital would be in for 19,000. They would reimburse us for half of our expenses on the 38,000. They've given us a timeline, I think, 20 weeks, 16 to 20 weeks, so four to five months, which fits in our timeline of six months to have some kind of final decision, how to move forward with this, out of this, out of the process. So still gets us within our budget time period. I don't know. Earl, is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
I want to use some different, to, to make sure we're, we're not loose with, with some of the words we're, we're using. First, we want to thank Monica for, and her team for, for being here field and, and for being willing to show up to, to represent themselves. So if you have a question for them, I'm sure Monica would be happy to address that. This project is not final. You are not making any final decisions today. I want to reiterate that. You're not confirming factually this is the conclusion of what we're doing. You are, from an engineering world, we have developed four conceptual options that, that Tommy and Josh did a terrific job at the joint meeting describing for, for you guys. The recent joint meeting we had at Jenny Rogers a few, a few weeks ago, where option one was compared to option two, and then, then, then three and four. The, the primary options on indoor rec was whether or not you build a, a new master facility, or whether or not you add it on to, to, to the wellness center and married the hospital as a partner long-term. So what we are doing is, is we are taking the concept of, of, of the partnership with the hospital, and we are developing a full schematic of that option, partly because that's really the only way you can analyze it compared to anything else, because it is a third party. So if the city is doing its own facility and, and we're doing a master facility, we can, we can just simply look at the cost of that. We know how that's going to be operated typically, right? Like, we're going to have to operate that through parks and rec. Well, this has a chance to be a little bit more complex in, in its operations, so this, this is the next correct step in, in being able to, to do some sort of comparison between your options, right? So we've not really done, done work tied to this schematic yet. I know Commissioner Peake wanted to participate, so the, the, what, what, this is that next step in, in, in really that process that, that where we do educate ourselves, we do make, make some recommendations on what to include, what not to include, and then how is that organized, and how is that paid for? And so, so this is the development of a concept into the schematic, right? And that's as far as it's going. This is the limit of, of that, and this will enable us to develop a, an agreement that you all can consider down the road, and, and, and the timeframe set forward, 20 weeks. So we, the, I think the MOU contemplated 180 days, and so we, we know between now and 180-day mark, we've got to get real information and, and bring that, that conversation to conclusion. So therefore, we went ahead and got started on, on getting this agreement in front of you. Now we're ready to proceed if you all are so willing to, to enter in, into the agreement in front of you. The hospital's going to pay their half. They verbalize that and confirm that consistent with MOU, and, and then we'll get started. And we will ask if one of you all do want to participate in, in that. I know that Commissioner Peake has said she would like to. We would just like to, to confirm that schedule and confirm that you do want to participate, and we'll make sure that you're invited to the meetings. The MOU contemplated a work group from the city. Typically, that's the city manager, city engineer, and, and parks and rec director for this type of project, but, but we would welcome the participation of, of one of, one of you folks, if that's what, what you are wanting to do, and which you've said, so. Hopefully that makes sense and helps a little bit.
Mr. Peake, are you willing to represent us?
I am.
There's no, there's no, there's no pay involved.
No, there's no pay. No, I understand.
Make sure you understand that. We say indoor facility. We're talking about basketball courts?
Basketball, volleyball, just indoor recreation facility, wellness concept that, that serves everybody.
You know that word I hate to say out loud, that pickleball?
Pickleball, might I have a court in there? Yes, sir. They, they may be able to use that in the winter time.
Oh, I know, but it's, I have talked to you about it off camera, right? Okay. Well, hospitals wouldn't have put 19,000 into looking into this. That means there's some commitment on their part, so I'd say, listen, I'd be in support of us moving, I'd be in support of us moving forward, just, just to see what it's going to look like. And it'd just be the city and the hospital. We can't get the county to come on board? Too early in the process?
It's probably a little early to, to be able to have that conversation. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of times you're, you're, it's like the skate park, you know? You're trying to define really what you're going to build, and, and so, yeah, we have a, a budget. We're trying to beat that budget, and, and, but we do have to come up with a design also. And so the, the process will, will control necessarily who, who could be your partner, and, and we'll just work that out.
And just to say, there's not been a design completed for an indoor rec facility at this point by anyone.
No.
The first one we were going through was a pool, where to put a pool, correct?
Well, you, so, so the four options. One, you have the idea of building one master facility with a pool at the, at this site. The option two was build the pool in Millennium Park and, and build the rec center married to the wellness center. Option three was, was build the rec center somewhere else and build the pool in Millennium Park. So we're building those, uh, uh, more of structure around each one of those with the understanding that, that we're going to schematic phase on this one, simply because this is the hardest one to work out the operations on because we have a new partner engaged. The city and the county, if, if you do a master facility that's owned by the city and county, we have a parks and rec agreement that's fairly straightforward in, in how that's going to be administered, right? So this is bringing the hospital into, how do you administer just this aspect of that capital plan? So it, it warrants exclusive conversation between the city and county initially because the, the parks and rec staff are city employees.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, people don't think we're duplicating services by, you know, engaging with another plan, you know?
You're trying to, you're trying to eliminate the duplication of services in our process. That's our goal, is to make things more efficient, make things more affordable, and, and to do, to do the best that provide the most services for the community where those don't exist.
Other questions or comments? Well, hearing none, let's, uh, do we have a motion already?
We don't.
We don't, do we? Okay, let's, is there a motion on paying the architect fees for investigating the possibility for indoor recreation facility partnered with the hospital? Is that close enough? Is there a motion?
It's resolution 2025-11-1007.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I was going to say the first reading, but resolution 2025-11-1007.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. And as we pass this resolution, the caveat is that you're going to represent us, right?
I just wanted to be there to hear what's, you know, so that I have knowledge of what's going on.
Well, we've been properly moved and seconded. We've had a lot of discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And Josh, you have the next one, don't you? Oh.
Yes, I got, these, these should be a little quicker. We'll move on to these next ones. So the next item in your packet is a lighting agreement with KU for the new road being built in the industrial park with their, with the KPDI grant, Phase Three. This is Stigall Drive. You have that agreement in your packet. There'll be nine new lights installed, and our, our monthly rate for those will be 183.06 a month, and they'll match the lights on corporate drive.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval, resolution 2025-11-1007.
Oh, eight?
Oh, eight. What's that?
Thank you, sir.
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Stigall Drive lighting contract, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Next one, Josh.
In your packet, you have a closeout agreement with the Federal Highways Administration to close out our 2023 Safe Streets for All grant that, that funded the Safety Action Plan that we completed last year. With the grant, with project, initial grant project was 200,000, and I think we ended up spending 199,988, so we did pretty good there. So we, we need your all's signature on the closeout document.
Is there a motion to close this grant out? 25-11-1009.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2025-11-1009.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second? Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know what? We should have had you move over a little closer. You'd be like, you're in another chamber or something.
Well, I didn't want to take her chair just because she's not here.
This is, this is your second meeting, so we still want to make sure you feel the part of this.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I should have suggested that earlier.
Well, I have my nameplate right here.
All right. Next one, Mr. Morgan.
Uh, yes. The, the city opened bids on November 4th for the replacement of 21 exterior doors at Millennium Park. This is part of the Millennium Park Furnishings Project that was, that was funded with capital budget. We only received one bid from Kid Glass in the amount of 48,774. That's, that's pretty close in line with what we'd seen from kind of initial quotes on, on the project. So we're recommending award of the bid to Kid Glass in the amount of 48,774.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval of resolution number 2025-11-1010.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, properly moved and seconded for 21 doors for 48,000. Man, industrial.
Seems like a lot, but I mean, it's, it's a little over 2,000 a door, and that's installed, and it owns a pretty heavy-duty exterior door, so it's.
I'm sure that's what it's costing. I think that's a bargain, probably, because they're industrial-grade doors, probably, right?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Josh, they're treating you nicely this evening. Come on, man. Keep it going.
Uh, the next one's another good one. You have an agreement in your packet with the Kentucky Department of Education to, to be partners on a project to replace a section of sidewalk on South Second Street. KSD reached out to us about partnering on this project earlier this year. This is, it's a section of the brick pavers on the, on the east side between, kind of between Jacob's Hall and Jacob Street. It's about 250 feet long. They want to replace those, those brick pavers with just a standard concrete sidewalk. So they're going to buy the concrete, and we're going to do the install. So that's what this, this agreement says, is they'll, they'll, they'll purchase concrete, we'll, we'll install it. We'll do the demolition and installation. So another good, another good project.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2025-11-1011.
Thank you, ma'am.
I agree.
You second, okay.
That's a word.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Sidewalk's on the other side in front of Jacob's Hall. They still got the papers there?
No, those are, that's a standard concrete sidewalk on that side. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Josh, one more, last one for Josh.
All right, last one. So in, in your package, you have an invoice from Harris Contracting in the amount of 71,866, 860. This was one that got a, got a little bit away from us. When, during the construction of the extension of Shannon Way out to Ghost Pike, the new, new project down there by Azuka and Cattlemen's, there was a section of Shannon Way that the city had already adopted that was built approximately six or seven years ago that was starting to fail. So while that contractor was there working on the road extension, I asked them to, to remove the, the asphalt surface and redo it, and we were just going to kind of do it on a, on a cost basis. And as they started to remove layers of the road, we had to go deeper and deeper and deeper to get to good, good material. We ended up removing about 24 inches of material, getting that out of the subbase and having to rebuild from there. We had to put an underdrain system in to drain the water out. It was all, it was wet is what was, the problem was, the subsurface was wet. So we've reviewed the, the invoice when all is said and done. The unit prices are good, the units are higher than we wanted them to be just because they did a lot more work. It was over 400 feet of road, so it was a pretty big section of road that they had to rebuild. So this is our total invoice, and we're just asking for approval to pay this invoice tonight. We would usually bring this to you all ahead of time, before the work's done. Lee's, Lee, I was dreading telling Lee about this one, but it's, it's work that we were going to need to do eventually. The, like I said, the pricing's good, and now the road is well-built. We watched it get rebuilt again, so we know that it's been built well, and it'll be there for a long time, so.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-11-1012.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, ma'am. So this, this part has been repaired, also matches the new part of the road, new section of the road, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Chief, you got the next one?
Yes, sir.
You're not getting a dome door, are you?
Today's his birthday, so I thought I'd step on him and let him have the day off.
You did good.
Uh, mayor and commissioners, every so often, we, speaking of ballistic vests, we apply for a grant through the Attorney General's Office to supply officers, officers with ballistic vests. It's totally 100% covered. The vests that we wear expire about every five years, and so we go through this process. This will be for the replacement vest of those that are about ready to expire and for new officers that we've. for new officers that we've hired through the year.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-11-10-13.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? See, you said 100% funded, nobody has a question, huh? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Is that a move for a motion to adjourn?
We do need a short executive session for the purpose of personnel.
Oh, okay. The chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session, I guess, I have this choice, you are. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61-810-1F.
Second.
Can I amend that to say very short? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in regular session. Mr. City Manager, you have some information for us?
Thank you. Staff is recommending the acceptance of the resignation of Dustin Hager from the water treatment operator training position.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all. All those in favor of accepting that resignation with regrets, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Commissioner Peake, I'd ask you to excuse yourself, please, for the next matter.
Don't be, don't be.
Thank you. And just for the benefit of the commission, the public, and staff, and particularly Ms. Peake, the next matter before you is a recommendation for the hiring of a fire chief, the new fire chief for the city of Danville. As Commissioner Peake's son is a battalion chief within the department, she has not been involved and she has been protected from participation in the process since the resignation of the previous fire chief, meaning any and all discussions related to this matter have been done without her participation and/or knowledge, and so as to protect her in full compliance with the city's ethics ordinance. As such, with her being out, and me stating on the record, the reasons for her disengagement on this topic, the city manager is ready to make a recommendation to you.
Thank you. After an extensive process of application receipts and review, we thank Randy for coordinating that and others for participating, the police chief, Tony, we appreciate his support in arriving at the recommendation of Michael McCurdy to the position of the Danville Fire Chief.
Whoa, great, yes. Well, you don't have to get a motion, Mr. Passer.
Yes. I make a motion that we accept the recommendation to have Mike McCurdy as our new fire chief.
Second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
All right, now it's been properly moved and second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
He is giving us $20 that he had to.
Oh, oh, oh. Should we ask Donna to come by again, or should we adjourn without Donna? Tell her she's still in the doughy house.
She's, she's coming.
Oh.
Come on in.
We missed you.
No, no, no. Shall we entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting?
You go.
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, please.
All right, the second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you.